Welcome, everyone. I, Councilmember Tola Martz, call the July 28 Issaquah City Council Study Session to order. Before we move on to tonight's agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. On March 6, the mayor issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 24, the governor issued Proclamation 20-28 prohibiting meetings that fall under the Open Public Meeting Act. The proclamation has been extended through August 1. Tonight's meeting will be held entirely remotely. The meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on this, on the meeting agenda, for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. Typically, we take public comments after each agenda item at study sessions. However, due to the additional logistics of the virtual meeting, we will be taking all comments at the beginning of the meeting. If there is anyone on the call now who would like to make public comments, please press star 3 on your phone now, and we will call on you using the first six digits of your phone number shortly. Council President Hunt will also share a summary of any comments that have been emailed regarding tonight's agenda items. I will now take roll call of the council members in attendance. Please say "here" when I call your name. Councilmember De Michele.
Here.
Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Council President Hunt.
Here.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
In addition, the following city staff are participating in tonight's meeting. City Administrator Wally Bobkowicz, Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder, Finance Director Beth Goldberg, Senior Transportation Planner Stephen Padua, Management Analyst Jeremy Bretcher Haymson, and Deputy City Clerk Tisha Geizer. Other city staff may also be in attendance and on hand for questions. For those members of the public on the call, welcome. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For council members, please continue to use the chat to indicate when you wish to speak. Identify yourself before you ask a question or participate in debate. The first item on the agenda is public comment. Tisha, has anyone signed up to speak?
We had one individual who signed up to speak, but I do not see any members of the public on the call who aren't here for one of the, to serve a presentation role in tonight's agenda items.
Okay. I think I should probably make a, do I still make a call three times for public comment, or?
You know, let me just quickly review the list of participants available and ensure that I'm not missing anyone, and then I think it would be reasonable to proceed. And I can confirm that we have no members of the public on the call, aside from our two TAB members who are here for part of the master mobility plan presentation.
And I should make clear that TAB refers to the Transportation Advisory Board. So as a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@issaquawawa.gov. Next, we will move on to the rest of our agenda. And the first item that we have, or the next item I should say that we have, is ID 0627: Mobility Master Plan Draft Review. This is going to be presented by Stephen Padua, our Senior Transportation Planner. So the master mobility plan was last before council in January. There have been revisions since then. We've got, as mentioned, several members of the Transportation Advisory Board here to participate in the conversation, and the administration is really going to be leading us on a directed feedback effort on three questions that were identified and sent to council prior to the meeting. And with that, I will hand things over to Stephen. And by the way, but I will be, Stephen will be presenting and leading this conversation, but I will be covering the questions that come up and interjecting when we have questions from council. Stephen, take it away.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Martz, and thank you, councilmembers, for allowing me to speak tonight on the mobility master plan. I'm joined tonight by the Chair and Vice Chair of the Transportation Advisory Board, Naina Milligan and Cynthia Crass. I'm also joined by Kendra Baylen, who is the Principal with our Consultant Parent Peers, and she'll be helping me answer any of your questions as part of our discussion tonight. Tonight, we are asking city councils to provide feedback on the policies, funding options, the project evaluation criteria, as well as asking the city council's preferred option to proceed on the mobility master plan. Before we get into the discussion portion of the agenda item, I'd like to provide a little bit of feedback or background information on the project. As many of you already know, the master plan has actually been a work in progress since 2015, when the Traffic Task Force provided multiple recommendations to enhance our transportation system. It took several steps to start the process, and staff has been able to put in a lot of hard work with the Transportation Advisory Board to develop the draft plan as it is today. Before I get further into the master plan, I think it's important to point out that our society has changed significantly in the last few months and will likely continue to change into the next year. But despite this process for developing the master plan starting prior to the pandemic, the resulting policies, the guidance is still very relevant to what we're still trying to achieve with our transportation system. Our land use is the same, and the interest to get around locally through various options has significantly increased. As you're aware, the pandemic has taken its toll on the city, and it's going to take some time to assess a long-term funding strategy for transportation. Additionally, our transit partners are going to need time to forecast the future of an expanded system, and we'll do what we can to support them in their process until they're ready to discuss how to build out the system locally. As members of the Transportation Advisory Board, I'd like to invite Naina and Cynthia to help me talk about the master plan in the context of this pandemic.
Naina's going first.
Am I first? I hear Cynthia. Hi, my name's Naina Milligan. I'm the Chairman of the Transportation Advisory Board. Thank you for having us here tonight. I just wanted to speak very generally at this point and thank the staff of the City of Issaquah staff for putting together this draft mobility master plan to present to you, and it has been a particular challenge, given the difficult times we're having. And this is a really complex document, scoring system and a project list. Do I understand how it'll all be employed to make the system that we desire? Well, I admit, it's hard for me to get my arms around it, and we're in such changing times. I'll reiterate what Stephen said, that the pandemic has turned our work lives and mobility upside down. How long will it take for us to recover to a new normal, and what is the new normal going to be? We don't know, and we can't really wait for such a long future reality to come about in order for us to adopt a plan. And now we have a document. We can work with this. We can leverage and improve it before adopting it, because we have time, and this is why we're bringing it to you. So I'm looking forward to this session with all of you. Thank you.
I think I'm next. So my name is Cynthia Crass. Many of you know Naina, but me not so much, so I'm going to take a tiny bit of my time and introduce myself. My name is Cynthia Crass. I'm the Vice Chair of the TAB. I've lived in Issaquah for almost five years, but I was in Subhamish next door for the previous 20 years. In fact, when I moved to the Plateau, my home was considered unincorporated Issaquah, so I feel like I've come full circle. I work in natural resource planning and have a master of urban planning, and I do have a lot of experience staffing and serving on commissions and boards. So I'm very, very excited to be able to volunteer in my community in this capacity. So I, yeah, I've really enjoyed working with Naina, and the professional staff has been just terrific. So it's a real, it's a great gig for volunteering. The TAB membership is really diverse, but we were remarkably unified on the guiding principles and the priorities of the MMP. I think I speak for the entire TAB when I say that we all strongly place a high value on equity. Inspired by the recent Black Lives Matter movement, I specifically reread the MMP through the lens of equity and social justice. Systemic racism is directly economic opportunity on access to transport. And report that that is a cornerstone of this plan. So like Naina, I just wanted to speak generally about some of the context and also thank all of you for being here. Thanks.
Thank you, Naina, and thank you, Cynthia. Now, the purpose of the master plan is to be the city's long-range planning document for a transportation system. This includes consolidating all pre-existing transportation policies so that the city staff have one document to guide our work. It also replaces any standalone planning documents that contain goals and policies to reduce confusion on what we're actually trying to achieve. Early in 2019, the city formed the Transportation Advisory Board to support the development of the master plan. I'm going to ask Naina and Cynthia to speak again on the board's hard work, specifically on the priorities for this project.
I guess I'm up next. Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. I'll take this turn. I just wanted to take another moment to tell you a little bit about how we worked as a group. It's been a real pleasure, as Cynthia said, to work with the staff. I want to name Kurt Seaman, who was just such a joy to work with while he was with the city, and with Stephen Padua. Their knowledge and depth of experience are really great assets for the city. And then, at this moment, I do want to take time to thank all the members of the TAB. As Cynthia said, it's a diverse group. They're very knowledgeable, and they're all volunteers, and so I'd like to take a moment, this is a good time for me to thank all of them. I've been on the TAB. Cynthia Crass is our current co-chair. We had A.J. McCauley for a while, who was our first co-chair, but then he moved away. We had Kyle Ochs, Tom McDonald, Kobe Sunday, Soya To Goyle, Marisol Visser, Stephanie Salman, Madeline Yay, and Emma Grubie. And, you know, all of these people brought full and rich perspectives from all different directions. But what was really interesting is that we have three high school students, three of the members are transit or transportation professionals. One of them's an expert with regional trails. We have an urban planner, Cynthia. We have a diversity in schools expert and a downtown business person. And although during the time that has passed, the membership has changed a little bit, but we still maintain this broad representation of the community. I also want to tell you about the process. In the beginning, we met together quite regularly, and that worked very well in developing the guiding principles. And I think I can speak for everyone, as Cynthia had earlier, that these have the general consensus and support of the entire TAB. We looked at them, and we looked at them again, and as we got further down in the process and thought about details, we've looked back on them, and they really haven't changed much since we and other community members worked on them. But for the deeper details of the plan, city staff employed the input not only from the TAB, but also from other members of the community. Stephen and other members went out to boards and commissions and surveys and other ways of gathering input. An example of how our input, TAB or community members, became part of the plan is proactive safety, a chapter that I know you all noticed. It's a section that I was crying out for, and I know that others did too, wishing to address safety needs in our community before somebody gets hurt or killed. And I think that that commitment to safety also manifests in the project prioritization criteria, which is that scorecard, because it applies more points to safety than any other category. So to me, in looking at that little pet project, that stuff made it in the plan. But there are many other details and impacts to be evaluated in this draft plan. So as I said before, I really can't represent the whole document, but I look forward to working with you and the staff to complete this plan with your input. Thanks.
I think Naina covered pretty much what I wanted to share. I also just want to say that we did have a lot of discussion about the guiding principles, and I think that, you know, the deeper this gets into implementation, you know, the less it's fully, you know, as appropriate, fully agreed upon embedded. The project criteria, though, and the guiding principles, we feel pretty well set on those. Actually, only got, you know, only a little bit better as we went, but they really, we were very much in agreement on those.
Great. Thank you, Naina, and thank you, Cynthia. As Naina spoke to staff engaged community in three different phases as part of this process to advance master plan. We initiated the first phase in early 2019, the second phase in later in 2019, and in 2020, we conducted the third phase earlier this year, and then again earlier this month. In the early stages of this process, we developed the guiding principles, which represent the vision of goals for the transportation system. Additionally, we, additionally, we developed policies to support these guiding principles, and tonight I'll highlight the major changes being proposed in the master plan. As I go through the policy changes, you'll notice the survey results from the latest phase of engagement in the charts on the side of the screen. One observation you might make is that there is strong support for the majority of these policies, as Cynthia and Naina spoke to, which is consistent throughout the process of developing this plan. So one of the first shifts is adoption of proactive safety measures. This would move us away from only evaluating reactive safety statistics to pursue projects. This was one of the main priorities coming from the Transportation Advisory Board. The next shift is committing to an accessible and comfortable multimodal transportation system. This is similar to our Complete Streets policy, but in this process to develop the master plan, we provided additional language on what this means for all the users of the system, not just the infrastructure we're putting in place. The next shift is the adoption of context-based design standards for bicycling and pedestrian networks. What this means is we'll have more tools to use in more situations to build out these networks. This change would shift our progress so that we're applying tailored solutions to fit a specific situation instead of applying one-size-fits designs to all situations. The next shift is committing to coordinate, sorry. The next shift is coordinate our land use with transit. While there's similar policies that coordinate these two items, the language we're applying now in the master plan recognizes that in order to have a successful transit network, we need to better tailor our land use to better support the type of services we want. Next is the investment in the intelligent transportation system. While there's pre-existing policy on this, the language in the master plan expands on the use of these systems to improve our crossing safety, in addition to the balancing of traffic flow through intersections. Next policy change is an increase in access to affordable transportation options. This policy acknowledges that not everyone can afford to maintain the high cost of car ownership, and there are more affordable options we can advance in a multimodal system and make it more accessible. Lastly, we are wanting to invest in the parking management strategies to manage parking demand in our growing city. The shift here is to prioritize efficiency improvements before pursuing an increase in capacity. This is consistent with the recommendations of the recent parking study that staff completed Another element of the master plan is the coordination of all users of the system. This will help us be more efficient with our resources and transparent on our investments as we're maximizing the benefits of a multimodal network. Another piece of the plan is we use the guiding principles to develop the project evaluation criteria to help guide our priorities. Through this process, we consolidate all related transportation projects and prioritize the list to guide our future capital plan. As indicated earlier, more work is going to be needed to better assess the impacts of the pandemic, but it doesn't change our next steps, which is ensuring we have the proper tools in place to fully implement the master plan. For the remainder of 2020, staff will focus our attention on a couple policy updates, getting our team fully staffed. In 2021, we'll be updating additional policies and standards, begin the process to incorporate the master plan into the capital improvement plan and city budget. In 2022, we'll continue the conversations to update our project list, with the hopes we'll be in a better place as a community, but also financially, to propose a smaller capital project program that will implement neighborhood improvements. The option for city council consideration tonight include directing staff to finalize the draft plan as proposed and adopt at the September 8 city council meeting. Propose revisions to the draft plan and adopt at the September 8 city council meeting. Propose additional analysis and postpone adoption of the mobility master plan. At this time, there's no indication of immediate financial impacts with adoption of the master plan, nor is there indication of immediate community impacts. But as stated in this presentation, there are multiple policy impacts related to the Calling tonight's meeting and into August, the project team will be making final revisions to the plan. On August 6, there will be a Transportation Advisory Board meeting to discuss the revisions and the recommendation for the city council. The administration plans to return at the September 8 city council meeting to propose adoption of the mobility master plan. So for tonight's discussion on the draft master plan, I'd like to propose, I'd like to pose questions for city council, but before I do that, I'd like to pause here for questions on the presentation.
Any questions from fellow council members? And I see a question from Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. This is Chris Ray. Just a couple of clarifications for me. When you say context-based network design, what does that mean? What is that?
Context-based network design is expanding on the type of, the type of facilities that we want to use for building out, like, for example, the bike network. The previous policy would say we would want to build a bike lane on all facilities where we were wanting our primary bike network. And going towards context-based designs means that we're actually going to take into account the land use and the activity in the area for where we're building these facilities and tailor those facilities based on that context. And so for the idea of building out a bike network through central Issaquah, that area is planned for future growth and higher activity for pedestrians. We're wanting a more robust type of facilities, like protective bike lanes or cycle tracks to want to go through that area versus through the neighborhoods where you're having a little less pedestrian activity, maybe a standard bike lane might make sense. So that's, that's kind of the idea behind context-based design.
Thank you. And then one other quick question. When you talk about intelligent signaling, are you talking about adaptive signaling? Or what exactly are you talking about with intelligent signaling?
We're talking about adaptive signals. With that, we're able to look at prioritizing the crossings in order to make safety improvements in intersections. That's, that's kind of the expansion of the language.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have a question from Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Are we looking for general questions about the master mobility plan or something very specific to what was just presented as a summary of that? What are we looking for here?
I'm sorry, go ahead. Well, I would suggest ask the question, and if Stephen thinks that would be better answered later in the conversation, or if it's part of an ongoing or a later question, you can do that.
Great.
Fire away.
How does the master mobility plan value maintenance versus building new? I don't necessarily see anything in kind of a scoring criteria or anything that really says this should be a priority before we build something new.
In our project evaluation criteria, we built in criteria around maintenance being a priority as part of when we're considering projects. Because it's been raised as a higher priority regionally, we're wanting to make sure that's considered in our criteria as we're developing our projects. So it's, the answer is, it is a high priority for our projects, because we want to make sure if we're going to be building, we want to be able to maintain it. And that has been a priority from our Public Works Operations staff as supporting this project.
Okay. It's a really, really long document, 500 and some pages. I didn't get that sense in reading it, that maintenance or making sure that we are maintaining what we currently have before building new is important. So I don't know whether that just did not come across in the plan, but that's something for you. The next set of questions around concurrency. So concurrency is handled around page 177, 178 of the document, and I'm wondering whether the adjustments that you're making to concurrency are to the formula or just to the data that builds into the model?
I'm actually going to ask Kendra to help me answer this question, who is the Principal with our Consultant Parent Peers, because she had spent a lot of time with putting together the language to support what we were trying to achieve with the master plan.
Perfect. Well, thank you, Stephen, and Councilmember Walsh. Your question on concurrency is well taken. It's a really important topic in our state, as you note. Essentially, you know, our interaction with concurrency as a part of this project was in how we set the level of service standards. So when you think about the state requirements for concurrency, it's actually a fairly simple concept, a great concept, and one that actually most states in our country aren't following. Actually, it's interesting, only Washington and Florida are the only states that officially have concurrency rules. But to answer your question, what we did with concurrency as a part of this plan, we worked with the Transportation Advisory Board and the community to reset how level of service standards are set for transportation facilities in the city. And the city's concurrency program, essentially, that's, that, probably some updates to that are appropriate following the mobility plan. There is some specific policy language, you'll see that while level of service at intersections, we did kind of follow the current level of service standards. So currently, standards for level of service D at certain intersections, level of service E at other intersections, the city has some flexibility language. It was the desire of the Transportation Advisory Board to build in additional flexibility language, recognizing that when we're thinking about what the goals for a transportation system are, while maintaining vehicular and freight mobility is very important, there was also an interest in some increased balance between that consideration with things like safety and accommodation of modes like walking, biking, transit, that haven't historically been a focus. And that's going back beyond even when Issaquah was incorporated, but thinking just historically how King County built its roadway system. So to answer your question, this mobility master plan, as is a requirement of state law, does kind of continue the city's concurrency program. A next step as a part of, from the mobility master plan may be to relook at the specific guidance for concurrency to match up with the level of service standards that have been updated as a part of the MMP. I hope that started to answer your question. I'm happy to elaborate more if that was unclear.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh again. I'm not sure it answered my question, just to provide a little bit more scope on that. The City of Subhamish has been sued because of the changes to their concurrency model, and I want to make sure we are not making a change that's going to get us sued. I'm also looking at the table on page 177 of our packet, and if I'm reading that right, it suggests that there is not enough remaining capacity in our current pipeline or in our current set of, I don't even know what to call that, but basically, there isn't enough capacity for the projects that are potentially going to be built, which would mean that they would fail concurrency. So I'm trying to understand if we made any changes that made that happen, or if I'm reading the table incorrectly.
We did not make any changes to the concurrency program that would make that happen, to kind of answer your question there. I think that's one I can work kind of offline with Stephen to provide you with some specific responses. I do appreciate your concerns about concurrency. I'm familiar with Subhamish's system and kind of some of the challenges that they're experiencing. I would say that those are much more closely tied to procedure than specifically their concurrency program that they have in place. What I would say is that my understanding of kind of how the city is proceeding with its procedures on this mobility master plan is absolutely the course that most communities follow. The city has established its mobility master plan The city has established its mobility master plan first to identify the projects that are the most important to it and that it can fund. And then the city, the next natural step is to relook at that concurrency program and make sure it matches up with, with the, the project list that's in place. In the case of Sammamish, the city actually, council was interested in proceeding with a concurrency update, which came first, and that's actually the, at the heart of kind of the issues with that community's challenges.
Okay, and I have one final question around concurrency. The, there's a table two within that section, which I guess is page 178 in our packet, which suggests that pass, regional pass-through trips are only expected between 2017 and 2040 to grow by 12%, while our internal trips that either start or end in the city are expected to grow by 58%. And that just doesn't grok for me, considering how much, what percentage of our, the large percentage of our traffic that comes and goes from Sammamish and passes through, and the amount of growth that they're experiencing right now, I can't get my head around the idea that we are making a plan that says their traffic is only going to grow by 12%, but our traffic is going to grow by 58%.
Okay, well, thank you, council member Walsh. I can actually very much directly answer that question. So again, you're talking about growth percentages. Issaquah is actually forecast to grow on a percentage basis in terms of the, the land uses that are expected, much more than Sammamish. Sammamish's, while yes, I concur with you that that's a big part of your traffic challenges today, they actually don't have a lot of growth planned in their future. I know you see a lot of buildings going up in Sammamish, but the rate of growth in that community is actually not terribly high. The other piece that I would put in place is that your city has been very diligent in making sure that it's got a good kind of jobs and housing balance and a good balance of services. So when we talk about regional pass-through trips that are coming on Issaquah streets, that is growth in trips that don't, don't, don't make any stops within Issaquah. So to the extent that it's a trip that starts in Sammamish and comes to the grocery store in Sammamish, in Issaquah, excuse me, or has a job in Issaquah, or uses one of your plethora of services, that would not be counted in that regional pass-through trip. That's actually a trip that is related to Issaquah. Regional pass-through trips are really truly those trips, for example, in Sammamish, and we're going to just pick on that community tonight, that use your streets, get onto I-90, and head out throughout the region. So that growth isn't terribly high, and I would definitely tie that to your careful planning and providing a very complete community within Issaquah.
Thank you, I'm done with my questions for now.
Okay.
Thank you, council member Walsh. Next up, we have council member Hall.
Thank you, council member Marks, this is council member Zach Hall. I'm interested in hearing a little bit more about parking manager, management strategies as it was presented. The slide, kind of talking about last engagement feedback. As a bar chart, where important to some folks and not important to some folks, and I know the summary within the master mobility plan, talked about how boards and commissions brought up how important that was, and then I know in the staff prepared packet, it also talked a little bit about how some community has skepticism around our ability to move the needle on parking management strategies. I was wondering if you could expand on that a little bit?
Sure. Thank you, council member Hall, for asking the questions. It's, it is very interesting to kind of look at the survey data and the results because it contrasted a lot of the conversations we had with stakeholders earlier this year. And what we were able to kind of figure out from looking at the data and comparing our notes from the conversations was the, when we spent the time to explain what parking management meant and how to do efficiency, people actually thought that was brilliant because they had never heard of that before. When we're investing less to gain just as much capacity without having to spend 10 times as much to build parking stalls, people favored that as much more. And unfortunately, in the survey, we couldn't exactly explain that like we did in the stakeholder meetings in the previous phases. And so that's, that's kind of the contrasting results between the survey and the conversations we had with all the stakeholder groups. Did I answer?
Sorry, does that answer your question, council member Hall?
Thank you, council member Marks, yes, it does. And I'll have some comments about parking later this evening.
All right. Council member DeMichelle.
Thank you, this is council member DeMichelle. Stephen and Naina and Cynthia, I wanted to thank all of you for acknowledging that we're in a whole new world. And the transportation world in particular has just been turned upside down just in the last few months. And then we heard today that Issaquah School District is going to open remotely, and so again, another huge change to the congestion levels that we usually experience in September. So I noticed that there's either a recommendation, or it's, it's typically done, that this plan would be reviewed in five years. Is there any conversation about how that schedule might be altered because of what we're facing here and the fact that it may be a year or so before we have any really good, solid, actionable data in front of us? We can't, we can't start rethinking the plan now because we don't really have good data. So any conversation that either the TAB or staff have had regarding when this plan might be coming back for review or updating? I'm just worried that we're, that we need to be nimble when it comes to the area of transportation, and so that's my concern. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, council member DeMichelle, for that question. It's, it is actually very important for staff and, and for the transportation advisory board. We've had several discussions about this internally and at the previous transportation advisory board meeting on what this might mean when it comes to data and how we might actually look at the transportation system. And, and while we feel a lot of the guidance coming from the master plan is still very relevant to what we want to do, we are, are likely going to have to take another look at a lot of the data. The travel behavior has significantly changed. How people want to get around has, has really changed locally, let alone regionally. And so how we accommodate that is, is going to be a little bit different, but in terms of like what the priorities are and how we invest in that is still very much going to be the same. And we feel like we, I want to say we will take a look at it next year, but I don't, I think it's hard for me to say everything's going to be settled out by then, but it's really as soon as we feel the, the society and our economy is really stapled out, that we're, we will feel comfortable with taking another look at it. And that's, that is kind of our expectation is, is to take another look at it as soon as we can.
Okay. I see Wally.
Does that answer your question, council member DeMichelle?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Council member Goodman.
Uh, thank you, I'm wondering if, if Wally wants to say something, because he, it sounded, it looked like maybe he popped up that he had a comment, and I wonder if it was relative, relative to the last discussion that was happening. So I'm happy to let him go first.
City administrator Bob Kwitz, do you wish to comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, council member Marks, members of the council, good evening. I, I think one of the questions the council may want to consider is this issue of revisiting the plan. Certainly, it's our intention to report back to you, I think certainly on an annual basis of, on, on implementation, but the, the idea that this plan is set in stone for five years, I don't believe is realistic. I think we, we don't want to be changing course too terribly often, but I think as council member DeMichelle said, there's a lot of unknowns in front of us. So as the council is considering the plan over the, this meeting, and then again in September, if you would like to give some specific direction, that we would certainly come back on an annual basis, and as part of that annual review, perhaps go back to the transportation advisory board and ask them to look at a particular portion of this. I, I think that's what we're going to need to do, at least for the next 24, 36 months. I think it'd be very difficult to say that this is going to be set in stone for five years. Under other circumstances, I think that's a very reasonable timeframe if you're in a steady state, but we're clearly not in a steady state. Thank you.
Thank you, city administrator. Back to council member Goodman.
Thank you, council member Goodman here. Mine just had a question, maybe I'm missing something here, but on page 141 in the second paragraph, it talks about, the page is about sound transit, and it talks about Sound Transit's plans to bring light rail here, light rail, and it said there would be an elevated station in Issaquah south of I-90. And I'm not aware, don't believe that we have settled on the location yet. And in other places in the document, it says that there, there, that there will be a station here, but we haven't, but that's to be determined. So I wonder if somebody could clear up what I missed. It seems like there's an inconsistency. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, council member Goodman. That's a, it's a really good point, and that's something that we actually, was pointed out to us recently, and so we are actually working on the editor of that, to make it clear that we pulled that language from the Sound Transit package directly, but you are correct that none of that has been finalized in stone. And so there is still a lot of work that needs to be done to work with Sound Transit on what that project will actually look like in the future.
Great, thank, and so the, this will be revised then, before the final?
Yes.
Thanks.
Council member Hall, you had a follow-on question?
Getting my mouse to work. Yes, thank you, council member Marks. Quick question, being a council newbie, for either Stephen or other staff, can you talk about the relationship between a planning document like this and our transportation improvement plan?
Yes, I can, I can speak to that, council member Walsh. The transportation improvement plan is a subset essentially of our capital improvement program. All it does is pull out all the transportation projects out of the CIP and deliver that to the state, which is required of us.
Does that, does that answer, does that cover your question, council member Hall?
Uh, thank you, council member Marks, yeah, I believe it does. Thanks.
All right, we don't have any other questions or comments at the moment, so back to you, Stephen.
Great, thank you, council member Marks. So my pointed questions tonight, I have three. Is looking at, are there any concerns with the policy direction, or the changes in policy proposed in the master plan? And second question, although I think we all agree that the strategies needs to be assessed sooner rather than later, I still want to open the floor on any concerns on funding for transportation. I think this type of feedback will help support the administration as we work through the implementation process. And then lastly, are there any questions or concerns regarding the project evaluation criteria? So I, I stopped sharing now. And lead with that first question, are there any concerns with the policy direction or changes in policy proposed in the master plan?
Can you put that question up so we can have that up while we're discussing it, or is it not in a form that we can do that?
I can leave this slide up if, if that's helpful, council member Marks.
Yeah, sure. Let's, let's do that. Council member Goodman?
Thank you. I, I don't have any specific policy concerns. First of all, I am enormously grateful for all of the work that the TAB did. This is just a huge body of work. This has been in the planning for six years, maybe, going back to one of our goal-setting sessions. And it's just a huge undertaking, and of course, it results in a huge document because we have a longstanding, you know, transportation problem, prob, different kinds of problems in the city. And how you address those problems is enormously difficult and complex when you have a city that practically speaking acts as an intersection for the, for this area of the region with the communities around us, traveling through our city to get to other places, and I think probably primarily places where they work, where we don't have job centers in other, in other areas. And that's just a reality that we're dealing with, and, and that we can't solve those problems or issues on our own. And that, that's part of why it's such a huge undertaking. So I, I just want to say that I appreciate so much all the work that the TAB did, it was very thoughtful, I think very thorough, and I think all of us could go through here and find things that we wanted to nitpick or change or revise, but I, you know, it is a big document, and I went through it, and am very impressed with how thoughtful it is. So thank you to the TAB members and staff who worked on it very hard, I really, and the consultants, I appreciate everybody who worked on it. We, I know that council president Hunt typically goes through any comments that we receive from the public. I just wanted to comment on, we did receive an email that had a number of questions, and I'm not going to go through those questions tonight, but there are several, several of them that I would like answered, and so I just wanted to put Stephen on notice that I was going to send him some of those questions that I thought were important questions, at least to me, to get answered, and that hopefully we can get the answers to those questions when this comes back before us. That's, that's the comment I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Goodman. Council member DeMichelle.
Thank you, this is council member DeMichelle. I too, it's, it is a huge, huge accomplishment, and many congratulations to Stephen and the transportation advisory board. I do have just a couple of comments I wanted to highlight, and then like council member Goodman, I'm going to send some smaller quibbles than they are quibbles, so I will send those to you after the meeting. One thing I had, I, first of all, I thought the vision or the guiding principles are right on. I think you captured everything that I've been hearing out in the community and the really important things that we are wrestling with in terms of transportation. The one area that I felt wasn't completely explained or didn't thread through the report was the environmental sustainability piece of it. We talk about reducing automobile rides, we talk about more walking, we talk about more bicycling, but we never, it never seemed, or at least I couldn't find when I was reading through, I couldn't find where that connected up with environmental sustainability. I know it does, you know it does. So how, I guess, let me point out just one place where I particularly caught it. It was on page 64, 65 in our packet, where we talk about reducing one drive-alone traffic by 10%. And I didn't see that that connection, connected to what kind of percentage change in carbon emissions are we expecting from that, if we achieve that goal? And that's just kind of an, an example of perhaps we could tie the vision of environmental sustainability a little bit closer to some of the data and some of the goals that we're talking about, so. And then the only other, and I'll tell you, this is a personal, personal response. On page 59, we have this statement about our, our relationship to King County Metro and Sound Transit. It says, "Since King County Metro and Sound Transit operate transit service in Issaquah, the city's role in transit service is generally limited to providing access to transit and being a good host to transit." So I want you to know that I have a fundamental disagreement with that approach and that statement in that I think the city's role is to identify the transit needs of our residents and to advocate for meeting those needs with our partners at Sound Transit and King County Metro. And so if there's some way that that particular statement could be rewritten to reflect a more active role for the city, I would very much appreciate it. And in fact, in- And in fact, in your action steps, you talk about identifying the transit needs. So I think that we're all on the same page. But I would really like to see that particular statement rewritten into a more active statement. And other than that, like Councilman Goodman, I will be sending you some smaller quibbles that you can take or toss out at your discretion. Thank you so much. And thanks to Nina and Cynthia for all the hard work. And I hope that they'll express that as well to the Transportation Advisory Board.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I generally agree with the 19 policies that you've written out here. I think they meet the ideas of what we would like to see in Issaquah transportation and mobility. I appreciate that. What I feel like is missing in the policy section or implementation section is how we put that in code. I see a lot of policies. I see a lot of action steps. I don't see a timeline for adjusting code or what changes specifically you see that are going to be needed in those areas. Plans are just plans unless they can actually do something. So that would be my comment in that area.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I'm going to take one minute also to summarize the email comments that we received on the plan. And we received three emails. One of them was expressing concern about the lack of climate action references and was also concerned that the implications of the plan may have changed due to circumstances around COVID and changes around COVID. We also received an email from a resident that suggested editing down the document to a more manageable size to make it easier to implement. And in this email, there were also a number of questions, which I believe is the email that Councilmember Goodman referred to. Many of the questions focusing around clarifying what problem we're trying to solve with the document. And then the third email that we received from a resident was expressing concerns that the plan did not address congestion, traffic, and failing intersections, and was also not addressing the need to not approve new density unless there is corresponding traffic plan. So concerns about new density without planning for the traffic that would come with new density. And then also, this resident expressed or suggested that the plan might be reviewed by the new environmental board that is in the process of being formed. So that summarizes the correspondence that we've received on this item. And then for my comments, I also wanted to thank the members of the TAB, the Transportation Advisory Board. I know they've done a lot of work and it was really impressive hearing Nina talk about all of the different expertise that they've brought to this board. And I really appreciate their efforts. When I was on the Planning Policy Commission, one of the things that I worked on was a visioning document for Central Issaquah. And because it was a vision document, it was a very big, big project. And I remember being on a commission doing that kind of project. And it is a lot of work. And I just wanted to also say I really appreciate it. And it is really important to us to have that kind of community engagement on these topics. As far as concerns that I had, I think implementing plans is always a concern. One thing that I thought might make it easier or more likely that we would be able to implement parts of this plan is with the project list, there are some new items, but there are also a number of items that tie into other plans. And I think being more specific about where they are in those plans and then also even if they aren't in another plan, how other plans would impact them. So for instance, there is a Tibbetts Valley Park frontage project, which is very high on the prioritized project list. And I would be curious to know if there's any implications from the parks plan as far as the master parks planning efforts that we should consider in conjunction with that highly prioritized plan. Just so we can, so as we consider implementation, it's easier to see where our different plans are overlapping or if there are trade-offs or things that need to be reconciled. And then I was also looking a lot at the walk-and-roll plan. And I think having a high-level, a high-level understanding of how this plan is different and additive to that plan, and then why, that would also be helpful for me in understanding this plan. Thanks. And thanks again for all of your work.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I believe Councilmember Goodman has a question?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I hope Councilmember Walsh doesn't mind me following up on her question or a comment about implementation and code. Stephen, I'm looking at the next steps. And I don't, I'm not sure I see anything about code. Is there something that we will need to think about in terms of revising code as a next step or as one of the next steps?
Yes, Councilmember Goodman. In the implementation next, as we talk about updating several policies, and that'll be code amendments, specifically with our complete streets policy, that'll require a code amendment. The update to our traffic calming policy will require a code amendment as well. That is something that we will be taking a look at sometime in 2021. And then in conjunction with a lot of the suggestions tonight, we'll be taking a look at other code amendments that we want to incorporate as part of this implementation process earlier next year or in 2022. But our biggest concern is making sure we have the capacity to take on several code amendments in addition to all the projects we're still advancing on our team.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't aware that all of those are in code. I think we have a lot of policies. But anyway, those are just my comments. I'm not sure they're all in code, but thanks for clarifying. I appreciate that.
Yes.
All right. I don't see any other comments or questions right now concerning policy. Anybody want a second go-round before we move to the next discussion item? I'm not seeing any further comments or questions. So Stephen, if you want to move us to the second question?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Martz. For the second question, it's primarily around soliciting any comments, feedback, or concerns regarding funding for transportation. A lot has changed in terms of what we're able to do right now. And as we look at implementation coming in the coming years, I think it would be helpful to get feedback from the city council members to help staff think about what exactly strategies we should be considering to help us plan ahead a little bit.
All right. Oops. Okay. And do we have questions or comments? I'll lead off one. In terms of funding, there's a great big challenge in the middle of all this because it talks about light rail coming to the city. And at the moment, there is unfortunately a non-trivial question mark associated around Sound Transit III and the resulting implementation of that package. That funding challenge would have large ripples down through our plans. How do we, how are we considering dealing with that contingency?
Councilmember Martz, is your question on if that funding goes away or if changes are made?
If that funding, yeah. Well, there's the funding that we have control over, but there's funding of things that, transportation things that are happening in our city that is not in our control. And one of the chief elements of that is light rail. I can't imagine that we're going to pass the hat around for the cost of light rail in the city. So I mean, it's a funding, I guess it's not technically a funding question if you want to be precise about it, but it does have to do with the overall funding environment for transportation in Issaquah.
In the conversations we've had with Sound Transit, the indication is that they are, it's early for them financially to look at what the outlook is going to be. The message we're getting from the board is that when they're looking at funding long-term in terms of Sound Transit III, it's not so much a question right now of if the funding is going to come out, but when it'll be coming out. That may change once they have a better financial assessment. But at least that is the message we're getting to. How we're prepared for that is we really want to take a look at what type of transit system we want. That's something we really didn't take enough time with the development of the mobility master plan with the expectations we would be having these conversations with Sound Transit in the coming years. So that we, although there's nothing prepared, there is a timeline where we are going to have conversations with Sound Transit to figure out what exactly that means, regardless of the changes that might come out of Sound Transit.
Okay. Okay. It seems sort of binary, right? Either the initiative will be ruled unconstitutional or it won't. And if it's not ruled unconstitutional, I don't understand. I mean, we're last in line on something that's all of a sudden not funded.
I'm sorry. I thought you were referring to kind of the pandemic. You're referring to the I-976 impacts on Sound Transit. Correct. We're not sure how to prepare for that. It's kind of a conversation that Sound Transit hasn't had with anybody. They are preparing for it, but how we might change, how we plan is yet to be seen depending on how Sound Transit reacts to what the court decision is.
Okay. I mean, it seems like the transit, high-capacity transit would be, is a cornerstone of our plans going forward. So, all right. We have a question, but also I think City Administrator Bobquitz has a comment before we get back to another council member?
Thank you, Councilmember Martz and members of the council. Just to follow up on Stephen's comments regarding funding, we need to be vigilant in all matters regarding the funding. All of our partners, be they Sound Transit, be they King County, be they the State of Washington, be they the federal government, are in significant financial crisis. And I think it's been said several times this evening, this plan is about Issaquah. This plan is about Issaquah's residents, businesses, and their transportation needs. We're going to need to be vigilant. You know, in the short term, I think all funding from our funding partners is going to dry up. And if that is the case, I think we're going to need to pivot looking at projects that we can either largely fund ourselves or through limited participation from other resources. So, you know, I think it's almost an unfair question to ask the council regarding funding concerns because quite honestly, everything is a funding concern at this point. But I think, you know, from our perspective, dealing with the transit pieces of this light rail and bus, and we've not really even talked about that this evening, that's the most immediate concern that the entire framework of what we've seen for bus transit could collapse here over the next several months because of funding needs. So we're going to remain vigilant. You know, if the council says that, you know, transit is not something we should be focused on, I can't imagine. But if you were to say that, obviously that has an impact on resources, time we would be spending on gathering up those limited resources. So this is a big, big issue for us. And any observations or insights or comments you have on it will be very helpful as we try to navigate pretty unknown territory here in the next near future.
Okay. Well, my comment then, I guess, on that funding is that the issue of the constitutionality of that initiative creates an incredibly just binary situation, right? Like we have buses that come to our transit center and we have buses that come to our transit, whatever the other... We have a transit center and we have a transit whatever. We have two transit hubs and buses come to them. And it's hard to envision a situation where no buses would come here at all. But there is a scenario where no light rail arrives in Issaquah in my lifetime, right? Because then if the initiative stays, is upheld, then Sound Transit doesn't have the money to complete ST3, and we're the last on the line. So it just seems existentially a different sort of question. I get that all sorts of funding is up in the air, but I think we need to start thinking about as a city the possibility that, you know, it's not a question of N number of buses coming to the city, but rather the possibility that one of the cornerstones of the next 30 years of our managed growth in the city just might not be there. So that's my feedback. It's a different kind of, it's an existential threat to our transit plan rather than incremental degradation the way other funding challenges are. But with that, I will move back to Councilmember Walsh as a comment.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Ultimately, I unfortunately think that funding is one of the weaknesses of this plan. Funding is really limited to about one page worth of content. There are no conclusions, just options presented. And in doing so, that doesn't address the inherent trade-offs that are necessitated in looking at transportation and mobility planning. So you present a list of projects. You evaluate the projects based on the scoring and evaluation criteria, but then don't evaluate the funding sources and availability that would be necessary to complete those projects. And so it kind of creates this, hey, this is what we'd like, but not this is what we're willing to do for it or this is what we're willing to give up for it. These are the trade-offs we're willing to make. And so in some ways, that means it just pushes the idea down the road and it means that we need to solve that problem later. Also, in the funding portion, it says, you know, if the city were able to maintain this level of revenue, the city could afford around $200 million in transportation projects over the next 20 years. I would expect that to also indicate which of the 28 or so projects that you guys have identified as priorities would be able to be afforded by that $200 million. And thus saying how possible it is to complete the priority projects, which gives us an idea how important it is then to look at other funding sources. So those are my general thoughts in that area.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I can be brief because Councilmember Walsh expressed some of my thoughts on the funding aspect and the funding concerns question. I do think it would help, right now, the project prioritization criteria are really separate from the funding section. And I think especially given our current financial constraints and the importance of considering the funding, I think it would be helpful to consider that with the criteria. Also because I think some of these projects are much, some of them, the funding sources as well as the amounts necessary would be very different. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I just wanted to emphasize what Councilmember Martz said in the last part of his comments. Sort of it started off with a funding question and I think really the issue is a planning question. So we have heavily relied, not, very, very heavily relied on getting Sound Transit and having transit services here in Issaquah. We have relied on those for our future planning and the growth. And I think it is not just important, I think it is critical that we continue to watch that very, very closely. And now with the pandemic, given the state of transit service, I think we need to not just watch Sound Transit and see what- I think we need to not just watch Sound Transit and see what happens there to that funding. I think we need to watch both of them, transit services and Sound Transit funding. And even a long-term change in transit services may for us, force us to rethink our growth plans. Because we are, because of the lag time already that we are allowed to have regarding facilities, keeping pace with growth, you know, you're already, we're already in a lag because we're allowed to do that. So any further degradation in transit services alone will be significant for us and interfere with our growth plans. So I think it's critical that we watch that very, very closely during the pandemic and in the next 12 months and be ready for us to consider action that we may want to take with our growth plans. Like I said, have relied on us having light rail and transit services. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Do any other council members wish to raise a question or a comment in the funding question? Question two of our discussion here. I'm not seeing any further virtual digital hands going up. So Stephen, I'll take it back to you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Martz. The last question is, first, are there any questions or concerns regarding the project evaluation criteria?
And I'm sure we'll get, oh, Councilmember Walsh is first to the post.
Thank you, this is Councilmember Walsh. So I generally agree with the policies and I appreciate the way that they were implemented in scoring. And actually, let me take a step back. I love that there is a scoring and project evaluation criteria. I think that is a fantastic thing to come out of this. My quibble is just with which things are scored where. I feel like because some of the elements, such as whether or not it agrees with a, the additions to parks or the, whether the project is in our growth areas in the valley floor, some of those things build upon each other. And I think in some ways, they become additive to the point that projects that are presented because there is a danger to the user, whether that's a walking user or a driving user, those projects cannot meet the criteria that would put them into a top priority. And one example I would come up with is the Providence Point Light. I think we as a council have recognized the potential for a dangerous situation there for drivers and pedestrians, and thus it became a higher priority for us. And I'm not, I'm seeing that on the project list and I'm seeing it mentioned, the danger to users, but even still, the score remains much lower than many of the other projects. And so I would take a look at that area because I don't feel like that effectively matches the policy ideas you presented, which was, you know, let's not let an accident happen or a death happen before we make a fix. So I just don't think there's an agreement in those areas.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Other questions or comments? Or we can just let Councilmember Walsh's general statement about happiness at a, at a evaluative criteria stand? It's looking like that's the way we're going to go. All right, back to you, Stephen. Do you have anything else for us this evening?
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. I was just going to conclude with one general question of, is there anything in the draft plan that wasn't covered in, in these questions that council members would like to comment or ask questions on?
All right, last call on Mobility Master Plan draft review questions for this evening. And back to council, back to Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, this is Councilmember Walsh. I'm sorry to dominate, but I have thoughts. Generally, I think what I really wish I saw in the plan and particularly in the executive summary section of the plan was what was written in the memo. I think the memo does a very good job of expressing, these are the reasons why we did this. This is what the, what our priorities are, and this is the direction that we want to take the city. I don't get that from the plan as it is. And I feel like because the plan particularly is so long, some of those summary elements can get lost, which makes me concerned about how this gets implemented. Because if a plan is hard to interpret for somebody who's, say, coming in new as a director of public works or something like that, I want them to be able to get the point very quickly, very succinctly, and not be able to, not need to read between the lines and not get lost in the details and miss the overarching point. Because I think the overarching point of the policies and the priorities is fantastic. It's core, it's what's been missing from some of our plans in the transportation area in the past. And so seeing those come to light is fantastic. I just miss that when I try and slog through 200 pages of document. So I think I would just argue of, let's make sure we make our point so that future readers don't get lost and interpreted in their own way. Thank you.
Councilmember De Michele.
Thanks, and I'll plus one Councilmember Walsh's comments. I had a question that just didn't fit in with anything else we've talked about tonight. So this is just for clarification. When I looked through the plan, it occurred to me, we have this, a school district that puts out a whole bunch of buses and a whole bunch of private cars and so forth under ordinary circumstances, not this year, but most of the time. And I didn't see any evidence in the report that we had had a discussion with the school district. And I, but I have a feeling that you must have had discussions with the school district. So I just am wondering how we were hoping to, to work with them. You know, the community is asking us on one particular, one particular building that they're building, if we can work with them to have a, reduce the car traffic into that new construction. So I'm just wondering how, how the school district played into this plan or if they, if they did.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. So the answer to your question is yes, we have been in coordination with school district when we were transitioning. I may ask Deputy City Administrator Snyder to help me answer this question, but in terms of how they contributed to the plan, we connected with school district staff to talk about elements of what we were wanting out of multi-mobility transportation. And their desire is twofold. One is making sure that land use is accommodating and, and being complementing the school district and how they expand on schools, but also the placement of schools. But also of the expansion of the different transportation options, particularly for high school students to get to the high schools because of the growing demand on parking, just for the amount of students that they're getting in their schools.
Right.
All right, next up, Council President Hunt.
Thank you. A comment that didn't fit into the earlier pieces of this, but I, I did note that there are filling of sidewalk gaps as a highly rated project by the prioritized project list. And sidewalk gaps have always come up when I talk with folks because I think it does, does reduce mobility along corridors in Issaquah. So I appreciated that and I especially appreciate it as a person who is often or has often been pushing a stroller in recent years. Thanks.
And back to Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, this is Councilmember Walsh. I forgot to ask, who is the user of the project evaluation criteria? Are decisions being made on whether or not, and how is that used? Is it used to determine whether something arrives on the TIP? Is it used when we're doing a review of individual projects to see whether or not they should be on there? Who's the user and how is it used?
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh for the question. The, the intention of the project evaluation criteria is to be used by staff and the administration to rank or prioritize the projects that will be considered to be included into the capital approval program and the TIP. So with the project evaluation criteria, we'll be able to put together what's high priority. So in the plan, we identified 27 high priority projects that base, that, that tell us that they best fit the mode of, of all of the guiding principles. So we will put those first. But in terms of like the timing of how that gets implemented, it's going to be based on the projects. And so that's where the CIP process will come in and how we're going to be incorporating the master plan into that.
Thank you.
All right, and that is, that is all that I have in the queue at the moment. Does anyone else have any closing questions or comments for Stephen or staff around the Mobility Master Plan? All right, well, City Administrator Bob Quitz.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Martz. So from my hearing of the council's discussion this evening, I would think that we are prepared then to take the comments that you have, make some changes, corrections, and come back to the council with a document in September for adoption. So Councilmember Martz, I'm just looking for a general head nod that that's, that that's where the council sees us at. I appreciate all of the, of the comments this evening. We'll go back and I think one of the ones that I've certainly taken away is that once the plan is adopted, it needs to be usable. And so if there's an opportunity for us, again, to make a better executive summary, to perhaps make it more clear what our attachments to the plan are moving forward so that the document is, is a little bit more user friendly moving forward. But, but Councilmember Martz, is that your understanding that we can move forward then with bringing this back to the council for adoption in September?
You know, that's what I heard, but I have to confess, this is the point in the meeting where I don't understand WebEx well enough. If I was on Zoom Gov, I would know how to show all the pictures of all the faces of my fellow council members right now, and I don't know how to do that in WebEx. So if anybody is vociferously shaking their head no or otherwise indicating a concern, I guess I would ask that they put a comment in chat. And we'll take just a couple of seconds and see if anybody has, if anybody disagrees with City Administrator Bob Quitz's assessment, that they would come back in September with, I, I think there was one other thing, which was an expectation to the administrator that some of those questions might get answered. Several council members indicated that they were going to provide supplemental questions for Stephen and that we would get answers on those questions prior to September.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right, I'm not seeing any other questions or comments, so I think we are safe to move on to our next item.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We're going to move on to ID, Stephen, thank you so much. And thank you to the members of the Transportation Advisory Board who were with us this evening. Really appreciate, I'll plus one, all the comments on the incredible hard work. I know what it's like to try to put together large technical presentations and really appreciate everybody's hard work and Stephen, you're answering our questions this evening. So we're, we're moving on to ID 0701, which is the 2020 Citywide Services Assessment Regarding Jail Financial Analysis. Jeremy Bretcher-Hamson, our management analyst, will be leading us off. And providing backup will be Beth Goldberg, our finance director. Jeremy?
Actually, this is Beth, and I'm going to provide an introduction and then hand it over to Jeremy. So, yeah, so good evening, council members. Tonight, we're here to present the results of the administration's financial analysis of the jail. And we're looking for direction from the council to inform our assumptions for the 2021 budget. I'm going to provide an overview, as I mentioned, and then hand it over to Jeremy. Also, Chief Beerbaum is on the call tonight and he's available to answer operational questions if you've got any over the course of the presentation. Just to set the context, as a reminder, the 2020 adopted budget set as a priority a citywide service assessment through which the administration would evaluate costs of various services to ensure that the city's delivering services in a cost-effective manner. There was a concern last year that is, resources were, were constrained. We needed to be, make sure we were being cost-effective. Little did we know at the time that COVID would be upon us. Anyway, the jail was one of those areas that was prioritized for review. And similar to the discussion around the Mobility Master Plan, the landscape has changed a lot over the last couple of months. And it very much also applies to the jail analysis. And so since the onset of COVID, jail utilization has changed and changed pretty dramatically. It's down, jail utilization is down to protect the health of inmates and staff. And it's not clear whether these trends will continue and for how long. On top of that, as the council is aware, there's been a recent dialogue on policing that may change over time how jails are, are used in the future. And then last week, King County, which operates a, a large jail in downtown Seattle that serves many contract cities, announced its intention to close the outdated jail in downtown Seattle in the next couple of years, which would potentially displace as many as 1,300 inmates to other jails. So the contract city landscape may be on the verge of changing. So as we were conducting this analysis, unfortunately, we don't have enough information and data at this time to predict how jail utilization will be in the future. So this analysis is based on pre-COVID data. And as Jeremy will describe in more detail in his remarks, the administration is recommending keeping the jail open and raising rates charged to contract cities for 2021. But because of this uncertainty, we are also recommending that we reexamine this analysis in 2021 when we may have additional information that will, could influence how, how we position ourselves and again, how jails are utilized in the future. So with that context, I will turn it over to Jeremy.
Great, thank you, Beth. So tonight, as Beth said, we're going to be going through the overview of the cost benefit analysis of the Issaquah jail. First, we'll go through a background and after providing background on jail operations and costs, I'll stop to see if there are any questions before proceeding on to jail operations evaluated in 2021, recommendations, and then time for council discussion and direction. The direction from Council Anita tonight is to recommend a way forward with one of the four options listed on the slide. Option one is to continue operating the jail at the current rates offered. Option two is to continue operating the jail, but increase rates charged to other cities that house their inmates in the Issaquah jail. Option three is to close the jail in contract with SCORE to house inmates. SCORE is the South Correctional Entity, it's a regional jail in Des Moines. And then option 3B is the same as option three, but to reduce bookings, lower contract costs. As Beth said, the administration is recommending option two, including the desire to revisit analysis again in 2021. For some background on the jail, the city has operated the jail since 2000. It's currently staffed by 10 correction officers and one supervisor. The jail can house up to 72 inmates at one time. On average, in 2019, about 45 beds were filled on a daily basis, 23 for contract cities and 22 for Issaquah inmates. And the city has contracts with 21 cities to house their misdemeanor inmates. While there are 21 contracts, only 14 are currently active. The city also accepts court commitments, who are people charged in other jurisdictions who choose to pay a fee to the city to serve their sentence in the Issaquah jail. These are typically offenders who need to serve time for DUI offenses. Now to move on to a background on costs. Issaquah provided a $347,000 subsidy to contract cities in 2019. While they made up 51% of the jail population, contract city revenues only covered 35% of the costs. of the costs. Additionally, there's a few differences between this 2019 baseline analysis and forecasting 2021 costs. On the expenditure side, costs are higher due to a one-time IPSA union salary payout of approximately $115,000, and there were also two additional FTEs in 2019 versus moving forward. On the revenue side, Federal Way contracted with the jail in December 2019 and is now one of the highest contributing contract cities. Also, the city increased part of their rate structure on January 1, 2020. It looks like we have a question from Councilmember Goodman. Should I continue or stop here?
I'm sorry, yes, Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. You mentioned that there are 21 contracts, but only 14 active. Can you explain what you mean?
Yeah, so in 2019 and the beginning of 2020, only 14 of those 21 cities were sending inmates to the Issaquah jail.
But do we, well, we have, are they current contracts with 21 cities? So they, so seven that aren't sending could send inmates tomorrow, for example?
That is correct, yes, but based on all of 2019, they didn't send any, so I wouldn't anticipate that they would continue based on my current understanding.
Okay, but they're not, they're not, okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And so here are the breakdown of rates for contract cities and the estimated annual revenue at the current rates. They're organized by most frequent jail users within each rate category. Jails typically charge two different daily rates to contract cities. As you can see, the city charges the lower rates of $90 and $97 to cities that have guaranteed beds, $118 for cities that don't have guaranteed beds, and $140 for court commitments. A contract city that commits to a guaranteed number of beds per day pays this rate whether they fill the beds or not. The advantage of guaranteed rates is that it provides financial certainty for the host city and guaranteed space for contract cities at a lower rate. For example, Federal Way, North Bend, and Snoqualmie all secure five guaranteed beds each day. But not all cities want to commit to a guaranteed number of beds, either because they use multiple jails and Issaquah's a backup, or if their jail needs fluctuate frequently. Currently, only five contract cities have guaranteed beds in those first two categories on the slide. The other key point here is that Issaquah's billing practices are different than other jails in the region. Typically, jails charge the surplus non-guaranteed rate, so our rate of $118, if a city with guaranteed beds exceeds their contracted amount. For example, in other jails, Federal Way, who currently contracts for the five guaranteed beds, would pay $90 for each of the first five beds in a given day, but $118 for the sixth, seventh, or eighth bed. Currently, Issaquah continues to charge that lower rate, the $90, for all beds that a city with guaranteed beds uses. Option two, which we're going to present later, proposes to change its billing practice. Here are the rates for jails in the region, as well as Issaquah's current rates. Currently, SCORE and King County Jail are the only two accepting new contract cities. As you can see, Issaquah's current rates are far lower than the two jails accepting new contracts. I explained guaranteed and non-guaranteed rates on the previous slide, but for context, a booking fee is a one-time charge for each inmate booked into the jail regardless of length of incarceration. If King County does end up closing the Seattle jail, as Beth mentioned, there'll be pressure to figure out where to send inmates in the region.
Jeremy, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Councilmember Goodman has a question?
I'm sorry to keep interrupting you, Councilmember Goodman here. When's the last time we, when's the last time we reviewed or updated our rates? Do you know?
Yeah, so on January 1, 2020 this year, we increased our non-guaranteed rate to $118 from $97, and before that, it was 2015 that we increased rates.
Okay, if you said that, I apologize because I was reading stuff along with you, so I'm sorry if I missed that, thanks.
Yeah, no worries. And so, again, if King County were to close the Seattle jail, it is a competitive market, so if the supply of jail beds goes down and the demand remains the same, other jurisdictions could raise rates in the future. So as I mentioned before, going on to the options considered, this was the background analysis, and I just wanted to stop to see if there are any other questions before moving on.
Yes, we have a question from Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, let me turn my AC off. Sorry, too much background noise. This is Councilmember Walsh. I noticed on the previous slide that it says that SCORE is announcing that it will start charging a $35 booking fee in 2022. I'm wondering whether we would consider doing the same at the same time, or whether there are reasons why we wouldn't want to increase the booking fee?
Yeah, so not all jails charge booking fees, as you see in this list. It hasn't been something we've done in the past, and the options we're considering include increasing rates and changing the booking practice, or rather, the billing practice that we have, as mentioned before. We didn't explore creating a booking fee, but if we wanted to, it would be easy to analyze what the expected revenue increase would be.
Can you give me a ballpark figure of the number of bookings we would get in a month or a year? I think you said an average of 45 beds are filled each night? Okay, I can do the background, thank you.
And are there any other questions at the moment before Jeremy continues? I don't see any, so if you want to continue on?
Great, thank you, Councilmember Martz.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I spoke too soon. Director Goldberg? Director Goldberg, we can't hear you.
Sorry, too many, too many buttons on my computer tonight, I guess every night, but just wanted to add on the booking fee, Councilmember Walsh, let us get back to you because it's not, it's not based on the number of people in jail each day, it's the number of times people are coming in and out of jail. So, for example, if you're taking someone to a court that's away from Issaquah, you would have another booking fee. And so there are also logistical issues around charging the booking fee, and we would have to evaluate whether our billing system would allow that. But that is something we can get back to with the data, and then that is something we can explore. But it is, it's from an implementation perspective, it's a little bit, it's a little bit outside of current practices for us.
Thank you, Director Goldberg. Jeremy, do you want to continue?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Martz. So here are the four different options considered for the analysis. Option one is to continue operating the jail with the current rate structure. Option two is to continue operating the jail with increased rates. Option three is to close the jail in contract with SCORE. And option 3B is the same as option three, but with reduced bookings. Here's a table that outlines the 2021 expected costs associated with each option.
Jeremy, I apologize to interrupt you, but Councilmember Walsh has a question.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, this is Councilmember Walsh. Did we consider an option 2B, which would be jail stays open, we increase the rates, and we decrease the number of people in our city that we book into jail?
We did not consider that option.
Okay, I, okay, we'll bring it up later.
Jeremy, I have a, I have a question. This is Councilmember Martz. In these, in the rates, going back to the rates just for a second, are those ever passed on, do any of the municipalities wind up billing the, whatever the right term is? Guess seems like the wrong word, inmate for these fees?
Can you restate the question? I didn't, I didn't understand.
The question is, are these fees ever passed on to the inmate? And it looks like Director Goldberg would like to field this one.
Yes, so, yeah, to your question in particular, no, the rates are not typically passed on to the inmate. It is the responsibility of, of the city charging, making the charges against the individual. I'm not even sure that legally we could pass along those fees, and there may be some equity issues associated with that. Where there is an exception is on the court commitments that Jeremy spoke of earlier, and these are individuals who have committed a crime, typically it's a DUI, and are required to spend time in jail and make arrangements through their attorney to spend their time in the Issaquah jail rather than the jail associated with the jurisdiction where their crime was committed. There is some desirability about the Issaquah jail as opposed to some of the other jails in the region. So people with means can afford to pay to spend their time in a jail other than where the jurisdiction that they committed the offense.
Yeah, Director Goldberg, I may not have made the point of my question clear, but my point wasn't that I was looking for us to be able to pass those costs on. I was concerned as an equity issue, that if we were to raise our rates, this council has in the distant past taken on court fees and their equity structure as an issue that we have had concerns about. And so I wanted to make sure that the costs that we are contemplating in option two would not be directly passed on to people who would have very little chance of paying.
And they, they would not, thank you for that clarification, they would not. But one of the things that, you know, we also need to take into account, and I believe Jeremy will speak to this later in the presentation, and this also echoes some of what we, what you heard discussed during the MMP discussion, is that all jurisdictions in the region are facing budget challenges. And so the, to the extent to which we're raising rates will, will have an impact on other cities, but our rates remain lower, and what we are proposing are rates that would remain lower than what other jails are charging. So we would still be an attractive option, but there, there will be, you know, impacts on, on the contract cities' budgets as well.
Understood, thank you very much for that answer. I believe that Councilmember Walsh has a question.
Thank you, this is Councilmember Walsh. What percentage of our bookings are people who are self-committing or whatever that is called versus contract versus our own jurisdiction?
Yeah, so moving forward, we expect 57% of inmates to be contract city, from contract cities versus from Issaquah, and then of that number, I would have to double-check and get back to you, but I believe the court commitments are below 10%. It's a small portion of the, the contract city inmates that are housed in the jail.
All right, that clears out our queue.
Great. And so back to the summary table of costs for each option. We'll dive deeper into each of the options on subsequent slides, but present this as an overview. Each option is compared to option one, which would be continuing the jail operations with the current rates. So in option one, the subsidy in this last row would continue to contract cities. In option two, the subsidy would be eliminated, and the revenues would increase by $250,000 due to increased rates. In option three, the jail would close and all associated revenues would go away. This eliminates the subsidy to contract cities, but has a $530,000 negative impact to the general fund compared to option one. And option four similarly closes the jail and removes all revenues, however, due to reduced bookings for only mandatory offenses, which we'll cover later. This option benefits the general fund by $160,000 relative to option one. And again, as mentioned before, the administration is recommending option two.
So this is Councilmember Martz. So there's not an option where we raise rates and keep contract cities and just raise their rate? We're only going to a general, it says in option two, jail stays open with increased rates, impact on contract city subsidy, contract city subsidy is eliminated. So would we no longer have an option for cities to commit to, to contract for a certain number of beds? We would just get rid of that and just go to a flat rate? What does the eliminated mean at the bottom of option two, I guess is my question?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Martz, and sorry that that isn't clear. So that means that, as presented in the background analysis, where we said there was a subsidy of $360,000 to contract cities, meaning that the revenue that we were receiving from contract cities didn't cover their costs. Option two keeps all contract cities, increases rates, but that subsidy that we would be providing to contract cities is eliminated due to the increased revenue with increased rates.
Sorry, can you go back and show me again the option two, the proposed structure? Or you haven't, you haven't shown that yet?
We haven't yet, we'll, we'll get into that.
Okay, I suspect my question, I, I still don't feel like I have an answer to my question, but I suspect I'll get it answered, so I will defer my question until you show me that. We have a question from Councilmember Goodman, I believe.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. Jeremy, what is the right that we have to raise rates since they're, since these are all based in contract? Does the contract allow us to just raise rates?
It does. My reading of the contract suggests that we have the ability to raise rates. We need to let contract cities know within 30 days if the, the contracts are to change, but we do have the ability in the contracts to, to increase rates.
Thank you.
And then the next question we have is from Council President Hunt.
Thank you, this is Council President Hunt. You had earlier referred to the subsidy being $347,000, and then here you said for option two that there was no subsidy, and the impact relative to the general fund though is $251,000. So trying to reconcile those two numbers, is that because we expect there to be less occupants of the jail, or what's, what's the difference there?
Thank you for the question, Council President Hunt. So the $340,000 subsidy presented below was an analysis of 2019 figures, and then moving forward, on the next slide actually, will show that subsidy, contract cities moving forward would be $167,000 if we keep rates the same. So the increase of $250,000 covers that $167,000 subsidy, and the change from 2019 to 2021 or anticipated 2021 figures is due to the increased rates as of January 1, 2020, as well as the inclusion of Federal Way and the revenue that comes from a new contract city.
Okay, thank you.
Director Goldberg has a comment, I believe? Nope, she's, no, okay. Next up, we have, you know, we really need to get the right title here. It's Council Deputy President Ray, not Councilmember Ray.
Yeah, far too many letters, Councilmember Martz, and I would need a larger box.
I see, I will try to remember.
Thank you. This is Deputy Council President Ray. Have we done any socialization or discussion with our contract cities that we are contemplating raising their rates?
Thank you for the question, Deputy Council President Ray. My understanding is that we have not, though maybe I'll leave the door open for Chief Beerbaum to, to interject if that's not true.
That is correct, we have not communicated with our cities yet until we had this meeting.
Well, there we go. Do you have a further question, Deputy Council President Ray?
No, thank you, that's great. I was just wondering how far down this trajectory we're, because they probably know it's coming now.
One would imagine. Councilmember DeMichelle?
And this might be for Chief Beerbaum. If option three says that we would close the jail, have we had discussions about what we would do with the jail if it was closed? Would we simply mothball it, or would we be looking at that space to do, to do something else with that space?
This is, this is Chief Beerbaum, and, you know, we have not had any further discussions about how that space would be utilized. Again, waiting to, to see how this Again, waiting to see how this discussion went. And then we would examine what our options would be depending upon the outcome of tonight's meeting.
Do you have a further follow-on question, Councilmember DeMichele?
I don't. Thank you very much.
Director Goldberg? Oh, no. I see that was the, never mind. Never mind. Any other questions at the moment? I see none. Carry on.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Now we're going to get into specifics of each of the options, and it'll hopefully answer some of the questions that a lot of you already having and answer anymore. So option one assumes that the city continues to operate the jail under the current rates. Based on analysis of future expected expenditures and jail use in 2021, the city is expected to provide a $167,000 subsidy for contract cities, which is lower than the subsidy from 2019, but still significant. This is what we were just discussing. As mentioned earlier, the subsidy is lower than 2019 due to the increased rates and the addition of Federal Way as a contract. Additionally, this slide highlights that the jail operating cost per inmate is $116. This is calculated by dividing the 2021 anticipated expenses at the 2021 anticipated number of inmate days. The city is not recommending option one because of the continued subsidy to contract cities. Now we're going to get into option two. And under option two, the jail would remain open and the city would increase rates and modify the city's billing practices, as we discussed earlier, to eliminate the subsidy to contract cities. The administration proposes to increase the rates to $110 for guaranteed rates, $140 for non-guaranteed rates, and $180 for court commitments.
Jeremy, we've got a question from Deputy Council President. Oh, no, no, we don't have a question. Carry on.
Thank you. We chose these proposed rates based on a few factors. First, the cost for housing inmates, which, as we discussed on the last slide, was $116 per inmate. Second, examining what the market will bear in terms of the higher rates that other jails in the region charge. Third, a higher non-guaranteed rate incentivizes more cities into guaranteed beds, which provides the city more financial certainty. And lastly, specific details around Federal Way as a contract city. So at the end of 2019, Federal Way left SCORE and contracted with the city of Issaquah, and since then has become one of the biggest users of the jail. SCORE is located much closer to Federal Way, and therefore, the city's jail rates must remain low enough to justify the additional travel time. If Federal Way were to stop sending inmates to the Issaquah jail, it would nearly negate all additional revenue expected with the increased rates in option two. In addition to the rate change listed in the slide, the administration would change their billing practice to conform with other jails in the region. This would mean that the higher non-guaranteed rate would be charged when contract cities are in excess of their contracted number of beds. Approximately $52,000 of the increased annual revenue in option two is attributed to this modified billing practice. So these are the budget impacts of option two. They result in the $250,000 of increased revenue net benefits to the general fund. The administration is recommending this option because it eliminates the current subsidy to contract cities. To option three, which assumes the city closes the jail and contracts with SCORE to house those arrested in the city. This option eliminates all revenues associated with the jail and lowers operating costs, but leads to a $534,000 hit to the general fund. There are two different staffing models considered in this analysis for transporting inmates to SCORE. The first, more expensive model, provides 24/7 coverage of transport officers for transporting inmates to SCORE. The second model, which is included on this slide in the financial information, provides transport coverage on weekdays between 7:00 AM and 11:00 PM. During nights and weekends, police officers would be pulled off duty to transport anyone arrested to SCORE, which is an estimated two and a half hour trip, including booking time. If the city is at minimum staffing, which is dictated in the IPOA union agreement as three police officers or less on shift, IPD would either go below minimum staffing or call in another police officer on overtime. For an idea on scale, IPD estimates there were 105 arrests made on weekend and night shifts in 2019 while operating at the minimum staffing of three police officers. The 24/7 staffing model, the first one discussed, would result in costs $200,000 higher than what is listed on this slide, and the administration does not recommend that model. The risks associated with closing the jail here in option three are that the city no longer controls costs and are at the discretion of SCORE to increase rates, resulting in increased costs for the city. SCORE is set to add a booking fee, as we discussed earlier, in 2022 of $35 per booking, and there may be justification to increase rates based on the announcement, again, as we discussed earlier, that King County will be closing the Seattle jail.
Councilmember Walsh has a question.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Is the $35 booking fee included in our estimated costs here?
It is not. So these are the 2021 anticipated costs, and that occurred in 2022.
Okay. Can we get that added to information given to us?
Yes, absolutely. Seeing no more questions, I'll continue on with option 3B, which has the same assumptions as option three in closing the jail and contracting with SCORE, but assumes fewer bookings to reduce the SCORE contract costs. Under this option, the city would only book inmates picked up for mandatory booking offenses, which include domestic violence, DUI, and court orders. People picked up on non-mandatory booking offenses such as shoplifting, property crimes, and drug offenses would no longer await their court proceedings in jail. This option would reduce the SCORE contract cost by approximately $700,000 and result in a $162,000 net benefit to the general fund compared to option one. The administration isn't recommending this option because it would substantively change booking practices. This decision is meant to inform the 2021 budget, and due to the current uncertainty around jail use, the administration recommends reevaluating this issue in 2021 if the council is interested in pursuing the policy change. So here, one last time is the summary table of each option. The administration is recommending adopting option two for the 2021 budget, along with revisiting jail analysis in 2021. Option two eliminates the subsidy to contract cities that continues in option one under the status quo. Option three results in a large hit to the general fund, and option 3B requires a significant policy shift in booking practices that the administration recommends delaying until the decision is made for the 2021 budget if the council is interested in this policy change. It's also important.
I'm sorry, Jeremy. Deputy Council President Ray has a question.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. This is Chris Ray. Jeremy, I'm going to pick up on something that Councilmember Walsh started early on, which is option 2B, which is the jail stays open with increased rates, but we do reduce bookings. Would that change this calculus at all? Or would it still work out about the same? Because our expenditures would be fixed and we'd have fixed partner city revenue, and so we might just have more open beds. Have you guys thought about what that would look like?
Thank you for the question. So you are correct that the financial information wouldn't change since all of the revenues are associated with contract cities, and the expenditures also wouldn't change significantly because we would still have to operate the jail. In terms of operation or impact, I may leave that question for Chief Beerbaum.
Director Goldberg has a comment?
Yes, so what that would mean is that the cost per inmate would go up. So you might recall earlier in the presentation, Jeremy spoke using this 2021 analysis of cost per inmate of $116. If Issaquah were to lower its population in the jail, the methodology that we used here would, with the expenditures largely remaining the same, because you need the minimum staffing levels to operate the jail, the cost per inmate would go up. So there would be a change in that. One of the challenges, and Councilmember Walsh spoke of this earlier, and I'm hearing Deputy Council President Ray, you echo this, in terms of whether the city of Issaquah can change its booking practices under number two. And the answer is yes, it could. And it may. And frankly, given the current environment with COVID, we have. And I think the policy question for the city to be contemplating, and it's a little bit tricky now as we're in the middle of a pandemic, is what are those booking practices going forward? And the city of Issaquah is not, you know, likely the only jurisdiction in the region contemplating that, which is one reason why we're recommending, you know, basically staying the course, keeping the jail open, adjusting the rates, but then reexamining this in 2021 because the landscape is so fluid right now. And, you know, I guess the other thing I should point out in all of this is this is based on pre-COVID data and taking pre-COVID jail utilization data to project out to 2021. As COVID persists, we may not have the numbers to support these revenue projections. So I think we've got to also acknowledge that, that we don't know how long the COVID reality is going to change operations. So that's another reason why it's like, okay, let's not make too drastic of changes right now. Let's take time to evaluate this, make the change for 2021 to ensure that we're not subsidizing contract cities, and then reexamine the whole gamut of this issue when we have more time, more data in 2021.
Thank you, Director Goldberg. Councilmember Goodman, do you want to ask your question now, as long as we're in question ask and mode?
Sure, thank you. Councilmember Goodman here. My question really is probably for Chief Beerbaum to answer. And one of the options, well, I guess I wanted to know if we studied any, or if, I don't recall seeing in the materials anything about, I'll call them intangibles, not just finance reasons, but intangibles to consider about, you know, whether, you know, we were to continue to operate a jail. It's my understanding that we have, that our jail has an excellent reputation in the region, and that inmates prefer our jail because of the treatment that they get, and that there are benefits to having a jail in our city. And I was wondering if perhaps Chief Beerbaum could speak to those intangibles regarding having a jail here.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Some of those aspects about having the own jail, we are able to provide additional services for outreach for homeless, additional services for some of the mental health services as well. We definitely have the ability to control, again, which individuals are booked into that jail. And so we have the ability to manage some of the inmate population issues. But really, what it comes down to is by having that, we are able to leverage a lot of those service programs and connect people with local programs that maybe are local, and we can connect them with those programs. That is one of the intangibles. I think Jeremy hit on one of them, the points earlier also about opportunity costs of if we do end up closing down the jail, we are sending our police officers out of the city and using, you know, that FTE to do those transports, as opposed to be able to keep them within the city and utilize them for other purposes. So there are several of those that, you're right, are not, we have not talked about tonight. This has been more of a financial analysis, but there are those aspects of controlling the level of service that your inmates have. Also, visitation for our inmates as well by keeping them local as well, so family members can come and visit inmates that perhaps are in the jail facility as well.
Councilmember Goodman, does that answer your question?
It does. And I had one other question. I can ask it now or I can ask it later. It's up to you.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. And, oh, so Jeremy, I'm not sure that I completely understand. So for my benefit, I guess, could you explain why some of the cities don't use our jail first? Why, I think you mentioned some of them have us as a backup. Can you explain a little bit more about why cities are not choosing to use the Issaquah jail?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilmember Goodman. My understanding is that some cities send inmates to multiple jails. Sometimes other jails can hit their capacity, and so cities will have contracts with multiple different jails to send inmates to. So that's my understanding of the matter. I don't know, Chief Beerbaum, do you know any other additional context?
Yes, originally, several, a few years ago, Bellevue and Redmond were utilizing our jail as well. They chose to go to SCORE upon the implementation of some of the video court and also for additional mental health and medical services. Some jails provide different levels of services in regards to that as well, and geography as well. There's a bunch of the agencies that originally started with SCORE when it was first initiated, and they've stayed within that facility. But over the years, we have seen agencies utilize our jail and then move to others, partially because of costs. Kirkland has their own jail, but they are not opening their beds to other agencies. So there's a lot of factors that will drive decisions for our, for all of these different contract cities.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I have two questions on the booking policy area. Who sets the booking policy and how is that set and evaluated? It's my first question.
Thank you. Can you say more, the booking policy being how, can you say more about what booking policy you're asking about?
Yeah, basically, the idea of 3B or 2B, choosing who we book and the policy around that.
Chief Beerbaum, I think I'll leave that question for you.
Yeah. I said it for our agency. Under the current circumstances under COVID, that is kind of a regional decision. A lot of agencies and the jails have made that decision to only book for mandatory arrests, just for the inmate health and welfare. After that, a lot of agencies, depending upon their decisions of how they manage costs, that's where they end up making their decisions of how they book or what crimes they decide to book into. Some jails have historically also limited, just based on capacity for some agencies, for who they can book into their jail. So by us having our own jail and having control of our own number of beds, then we are able to book in some of those crimes that are maybe outside of the normal mandatory.
I wonder maybe more for Wally or someone, if that is a policy consideration that we might take a look at as far as safety and equity issue, if that's something that we would look at as a council?
If I may, Councilmember Martz, members of the council, the action plan that we are sharing with the community, I think, contains some of those components. So if that is something that is endorsed by the council next month, I would imagine we will be coming back to you sometime next year to talk further about that.
So the action plan is in the third tier of plans? Because there was the stuff to do this summer, stuff to do this year, and stuff to do next year?
Right.
And it's in that stuff to do next year category?
That's correct. And if we would need to call it out, I think it's under a more general category, but certainly if the council would like to have it be more specific, we could do that. But we would not be able to get to it until after the first of next year. But we would not be able to get to it until after the first of next year.
Councilmember Walsh, does that answer your question?
Uh, yes, but I have one more.
Please.
Okay, so my other question is, continuing on this idea of booking policies. If we were to look at 2B, um, as an option where we, the jail stays open, we have the increased rates, but we book fewer people, since that affects the overall cost per inmate, and if the cost per inmate was higher, then would there be a circumstance in that arena where we would still be subsidizing our contract cities?
And let me take this, because I think we're, we're getting into a larger policy discussion here. Um, you know, clearly if we have less people and we do not make other changes with our contractors, then yes, then that, that subsidy would continue because there's excess capacity, uh, that we're not managing. Uh, as I think several of, uh, the presenters have mentioned this evening, there are many unknowns. We are not doing this in a vacuum, uh, all of the communities that we contract with. Uh, if they're not having these discussions, they likely will be having these discussions. Uh, our, our message tonight is we should charge more to those that we're contracting with to help, uh, lower that, uh, subsidy in, in the case of option, to hopefully eliminate it. But it's going to be a very fluid situation, uh, at least the next 12 months, if not beyond. And we're just committed to keeping an eye on it. Uh, and I think the, the larger policy questions of how we operate the jail, um, you know, if we have less, uh, Issaquah inmates and we then have more folks from the region, are we comfortable with that? Are we comfortable having a jail be a cost center, uh, for us? Uh, there's a lot of unknowns and a lot of moving factors moving forward. But we're, the administration's committed, uh, to continue to have the dialogue with the council on these policy questions moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator. Uh, and I actually have a question, since we've cleared the queue. So Jeremy, can I, do I read this as option one, the way we're doing it today? The jail costs us a lot of money, but, uh, option three, closing the jail and contracting with SCORE, would cost us even more money. Options two and options 3B still cost us money, but they cost us less money. However, option 3B, uh, we don't really want to look at right now for a lot of the reasons that the city administrator just mentioned, which is why we're talking about option two, or down the road at option 2B, like, uh, Councilmember Walsh mentioned. Is that a, is that a accurate assessment?
Yes, Councilmember Martz, that is definitely an accurate assessment.
This reminds me, this reminds me of the old Winston Churchill quote, which is that democracy is the worst form of government, except for every other form of government. So, all right, uh, back to you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Martz. Uh, I had nothing else to add. We jumped into questions exactly as I was finishing up the presentation. And so next was simply discussion slides, so I can stop sharing unless there are specific questions to slides. Um, but I'll hand it back over to the council for any discussion.
All right, I'd like to ask, uh, Deputy City Administrator Snyder, um, what she is looking for from council's discussion this evening? Sorry, you probably weren't planning on being called on. Andrea, are you there?
Uh, hi, Councilmember Martz. Um, thank you. I really defer to, uh, Director Goldberg and Jeremy on this item. I think he, uh, was looking for feedback on the options that were provided. So I, I would really turn it back over to Director Goldberg. Thank you very much.
Director Goldberg, what are you looking for from the conversation this evening with council?
So, uh, this is Director Goldberg. I'm now on my phone because my computer froze up, so I hope you can hear me.
We can. Thank you for being adaptive.
Oh, yes, so, um, we are, we're looking for direction from, uh, the council on, uh, which option they would like the administration to pursue for 2021, because that will influence how we prepare the 2021 budget that will be transmitted to the council at the end of September.
All right, thank you for a very clear answer. Uh, and Jeremy has thrown the ball back into our court, and first up in the queue is Deputy Counsel President Ray.
Um, first, Jeremy, um, Beth, thank you for the excellent work. This was, um, really, really well, well crafted, really well thought through, and, and I really appreciate that. Um, it really does seem to me that we, we need to ask our contract cities to pay their share, fair share. So option one, to me, is, is a non-starter. Um, SCORE is awfully expensive, and it also puts an extra burden on our local law enforcement, so that's a non-starter. And then if we're going to talk about booking policies later, after we have some more time to digest that, then 3B and the, the, uh, new, new emerging 2B are non-starters. So, um, I think just by kind of throwing things out in the process of elimination, I think you're on the right track. And, and the approach to, uh, rationalizing our, our cost with, um, to cover our fees, to cover our costs makes total sense. And, and our fees that we're proposing are not out of line with what other jails are charging. So, like, again, uh, well done, well crafted, well put together argument, and, uh, I, I'm, I'm aligned with where you're, you're heading.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. This is, uh, Councilmember Zach Hall. Um, I guess I would very much like to get to where Deputy Counsel President Ray is. Um, I don't think I s- I don't see the justification for us to raise rates to our city partners when we're begging some of our partners not to raise their rates. And I'm struggling with that tension, so maybe, hopefully, the administration, just other council members can help me, help me stop struggling with that. So I just want, um, all these, all caps saying he has a comment, um, maybe, um, maybe we should, Councilmember Martz, I'll let you defer to maybe.
Yeah, I, I, I think he, uh, I don't think anything was implied in that, but City Administrator Bob Kowits?
Uh, Councilmember Martz, uh, Councilmember Hall, I, I apologize. I did not mean to stop you in, in mid-sentence, uh, with my cap lock, uh, on there. Um, if it's all right, Councilmember Martz, I'm happy to answer the question.
Please.
Um, you know, what we haven't really talked about tonight is the marketplace. We've talked about, uh, you know, some of the social, uh, factors that are impacting, uh, communities, and what may be impacting, um, um, and, you know, individual jurisdictions and their booking procedures. Uh, but there is a marketplace out there currently, uh, for communities to shop, uh, and to bring their, um, their inmates to various other organizations. And so part of the reason that we're looking to raise the rates is that the marketplace will support it. Uh, it is not that we're asking, um, our partners to, uh, spend money above and beyond the marketplace and not being sensitive to what's happening. Um, but we feel, uh, that, you know, there are jurisdictions that play the marketplace. And we've talked a little bit about Federal Way, uh, this evening. Um, they have made a conscious decision, uh, to have additional, additional costs on their end to transport prisoners here when SCORE is closer. But because the costs of SCORE are higher than they are for us, we were able to bring that business in. So, so there is that competitive marketplace issue, uh, that we want to be mindful of. Uh, we also don't want to price ourselves out of that marketplace, because, for example, with Federal Way, if we are too close to what SCORE is, then they have to look at the cost they're incurring, uh, with their own staff to transport prisoners, and then they may not, they may go someplace else. So, uh, I, I think at this point, it's not like a water rate. Um, it's more like, you know, we're, we're providing a commodity, we're providing a service, uh, that, that has value. And so we feel comfortable with the rates, uh, that we're offering. We had talked internally about going higher, um, and we have, we, we decided not to put forward some higher rates, uh, one, because of the marketplace, and two, because we did not think that the city council wanted to be overly profiting on the operation of a jail. And so there is that balance. Uh, we feel comfortable that this is a marketplace issue. Uh, we are less concerned about going to our partners with an increase, because they will look at the marketplace, and they will say, yes, this makes sense, uh, we are still going to be cheaper, uh, and more affordable for many jurisdictions, even with the increase.
But, thank, thank you, City Administrator. Councilmember Hall, did that answer your question?
This is Councilmember Hall. I'm chewing on it. Yes and no, but mostly yes.
All right.
But I'm still chewing on it.
And, and Councilmember Martz and Councilmember Hall, maybe look one last piece of this, and that is the subsidy. And so we have to weigh, uh, what we're charging, uh, other jurisdictions. We want to be fair to them. We also want to be fair to our residents. I think one of the reasons, um, that this issue came up during last year's budget, uh, discussions, and the reason we have spent, you know, a considerable amount of internal resources in the last several months doing the study, is the concern of the council that our residents were paying an undue burden to subsidize, uh, other communities. And so there's a lot of things at work here we're looking to balance, uh, but making sure that our residents are not subsidizing the residents of other communities, because we're not charging enough. Um, that's the other piece of the puzzle. Thank you, Councilmember Martz.
Yep, thank you, City Administrator. Uh, Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you. Um, I think that, uh, that, uh, the explanation about subsidies is exactly why I would be supporting, uh, option number two. And, um, I, I do think it's a delicate balance, but I don't think that the residents of Issaquah should be basically paying for, um, the services that, uh, that we are providing to other jurisdictions. It should be, should be balanced out, so that, uh, we're neither making a profit nor taking a loss. And, um, I was, I just want to comment that I'm very happy to hear that we are providing mental health services and, um, outreach to homeless people in the jail. Um, that was one of the big questions I had, because we're going to be discussing the interplay between, uh, police accountability and human services, uh, in a couple of weeks. And, um, that does have a budget implication. So I was very glad to hear that those services are already incorporated into what we're doing. So I would be supporting option number two, uh, at this point. And, uh, unless we get some more information, um, I think, uh, that is the prudent way to go forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. Um, firstly, I wanted to summarize, um, that we did receive two emails. They, um, they did not specifically reference this item, um, agenda item, but they do reference, um, jail operations. And those were emails that were in the context of, um, a non-violent city project, and, um, recommendations from these two residents who wrote to us, um, to become a part of that, um, non-violent cities project. And then within that project, um, there's information about reforming local jails and, um, having more, um, education and, um, non, uh, that, and that aspect of the non-violent cities project. Um, so, and then we've received a lot of, um, a lot of correspondence regarding, uh, the police accountability plan more broadly, but those, that, those two did specifically reference jail operations. Um, and then for my comments, I, um, was one of the council members who asked about the cost of the jail, um, in the previous budget year. And, um, I appreciate the clarity with which this information has been presented, and I appreciate, um, knowing very clearly how much we were subsidizing the, um, other cities, because that was one of my concerns and questions, um, why I wanted to, to have that information. And I agree with my fellow council members who have, um, made the point so that, um, as well as city administrators, who made the point that, um, the residents, I don't see why the residents of Issaquah should be subsidizing the, um, operations of other cities that would be sending their jail inmates to us. So I think that, um, that's why I would be supportive of option two. And, um, especially right now with our, um, financial situation, I think we need to look at all of our different operations and make sure that we are fiscally responsible across the board. And so this would be, um, fiscally responsible for our operations of this particular aspect of the city. Uh, and then I think looking into the booking practices more as part of the bigger conversations, um, around police accountability, which are ongoing already, would be, would be good. Um, and since that's in the process now, and since also we have so many questions around, um, changes around, uh, COVID, um, I think that it makes sense to me to go with, um, the administration's recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Oops, sorry. I pressed the wrong button. Uh, Councilmember Goodman here. Um, uh, for the, um, reasons that have already been mentioned, um, several times, namely, um, subsidy, subsidies, um, even though we subsidize, heavily subsidize some services, um, it's a policy decision. Parks Department is one of them. Um, I still do not believe that the jail should be one of those. And so I'm in line with the recommendation for option two, and I think the budget should be prepared, the proposed budget should be prepared accordingly. Thank you. And I agree that this presentation, um, and the work that was done on this was very thorough, and I very much appreciate it. Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Uh, I will also concur that this, uh, presentation and the information gathered has been long awaited, and I appreciate the clarity that has been provided here in really knowing what our financial situation is and what the options we have. Um, so that's very much appreciated. Also, support the idea of option two, and particularly going toward option 2B. And I very, very much appreciate Beth saying that this is a very fluid situation, and we are on track to look at this again in 2021, based on how our users are using it, and based on their booking policies, and thus the cost per inmate, and if there are additional subsidies. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Uh, I think everybody has commented except me. Uh, so I will echo that it was a great presentation, uh, well-prepared material. Uh, Jeremy, also the support, as always, of Director Goldberg. This was such a great presentation. I personally would love to see a similar presentation about Tibbetts Valley Manor. I would love to see options on Tibbetts Valley Manor that had sort of a similar kind of, you know, options one, two, and three. And, uh, boy, that, that, that would be something. Uh, I agree, subsidy is the key here. Um, we try to do cost recovery. Uh, we do, we have said that there are things, when we can, that we will subsidize for residents that we won't necessarily subsidize for, uh, out-of-city folks. So I appreciate that the administration recognizes that it, uh, jail is a different sort of service than other services, which is why we're not trying to go full market rate, uh, or full market, or can bear, I guess. Uh, so I think this is the right mix of making sure that we're not subsidizing, but also not trying to be ghoulish about, uh, raking in cash. On what, uh, I still recall the, a few years ago, the, the woman who headed up the, the, uh, King County Correction System said, um, you know, she sees people on the worst day, on what is for many of them the worst day of their lives. Um, so, and I think about that often when I think about jails. So this seems like, uh, the right balance. Um, and it's also, you know, it allows us to look residents in the eye. I think some of us, I didn't know whether we made money or lost money off, off the jail. What we now know is that we lose a lot of money with the jail, but we'd lose even more money with any of the other options. And so this is one of those, you know, if a resident stops me on the street and tells me, why the heck do we have a jail? Um, I'm able to answer that question tonight in a way that I wasn't, uh, a week ago. So for that, I am deeply appreciative. Um, City Administrator Bob Kowits, uh, do you have the information you were looking for from the seven of us?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Martz, members of the council, appreciate, uh, your discussion. Uh, we'll move forward with the option, uh, of, uh, revising our rates, and we'll continue to keep you posted on some of the larger questions, uh, as we continue having those discussions.
And I, and I realize, I apologize to Councilmember Hall. I, uh, just saw, uh, his, uh, his, his, uh, hand raised there. So Councilmember Hall, my apologies. Your comment.
No worries at all, Councilmember Martz. Thank you very much. I just wanted to circle back based on, um, my previous comments, and just thank City Administrator Bob Kowits, and for all of you for, um, sharing your thoughts. Bob Kwitsch and for all of you for sharing your thoughts on that. I didn't hear anything that I disagree with. So just to finish up on providing my direction to administration and also to ask, to make an ask that if we do hear from any of our partner cities that there is a request to hold off on rate increases or anything like that, I would like to request that council is made aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Does anyone have any closing comments on this ID, which is our last item of the evening? I'll, I'm not seeing any. I'll, I'll offer for good of the order. I don't remember if we normally do that in special meetings, but is, I heard, I heard a drawn breath in there. Somebody, no? I don't see any for good of the order coming up. I'll wait just a second or two. Not seeing anything. Final, last, any last, last comment from the administration, City Administrator?
No, we're having a community meeting tomorrow evening on the police accountability plan. I think we have 70 people signed up, so it's, should be a, a good, a good event, and we'll report back on that in a couple of weeks.
And I, I want to thank all the staff this evening. I saw the agenda and I told my wife, well, it says it's going to be three hours, but I'm guessing more like three and a half or four. And here we are, two and a half hours in adjourning the meeting, so it's just a sign of how well the material was put together and presented by staff. So thank you once again, and with that, we are adjourned.